We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at four two. Um, can we, everyone receive the minutes for the May meeting? Any changes or corrections? We have a motion to approve.
I shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. A statistical. Sorry.
Today's name, uh, Director of Marketing and Outreach here at the May twenty twenty five statistical report. Um, you all have in front of you the overview statistics. Uh, the key highlight for the month of May is that we have a significant increase in both, uh, library visitors and circulation compared to May of last year. Uh, the total visitors across the system were up eight percent and physical circulation increased by nineteen percent. Um, this is continuing a strong upward in trend, um, that we've seen the past few months. Uh, most notably, uh, the average monthly circulation is now up seven percent, uh, year over year, um, in the twelve months, well, eleven out of the twelve months of the fiscal year. Uh, marking the first sustained increase in many, many years. Uh, signaling a strong resurgence in community use of our physical collections. Thanks to the responsive collection development that happens in our material department, most recently with the new Rising Leaders Collection. Program attendance also grew by four percent over May twenty twenty four, uh, with four thousand three hundred ninety six attendees across one hundred and fifty programs. Children's programs remain a staple of engagement, but we also saw consistent interest in hands-on learning opportunities and our wellness platform like. With other agencies to offer demonstrates the broad feel of our programs and events. Digital services, uh, continues its steady rise with eight percent increase in digital circulation and ten percent increase in digital users. Over the same time last year, this suggests that digital access remains a major part of our service model. And I'd also like to note, uh, the Western Port Library close to the public on May thirteenth due to building damage and ongoing flood recovery effort. Uh, in response, the library quickly mobilized an essential online hub to share up-to-date information and collect, uh, the public, oh, sorry, to connect the public with local resources. Uh, the flood relief landing page received over thirty-seven hundred visits and the website saw more than hundred percent growth in overall traffic. Alongside with a five hundred percent increase in social media reach. Uh, this search reflects the community's strong desire to stay informed and involved during a difficult time, not just for, not just their support for the library, but for one another. The public's engagement with these resources demonstrates how the library continues to serve as a trusted connector and responsive partner during the moments of both celebration and challenge. And on the back of your overview there, um, you'll find photos of some of the last programs in the event as well as, uh, flood recovery efforts from staff and the community. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, I'm here to talk to you about the May twenty twenty five financial report highlight. Um, the income side, we had in May, there was eight hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents in funds and fees collected, two hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents in propier. And five hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents in pretty income. Uh, notably in gifts and memorials income, that that's, uh, forty-five thousand. We received forty-seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety-four cents in donations with all but one of those donations given for the Western Port Library following the flooding. This amount totaled donations through May thirty-first, and there are more that will be reflected in next month's report as income starting on June the first. Gifts from over ninety people vary from five-dollar gifts up through two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar gifts. And were designated specifically for library collections, which is the books for area of most need for the recovery. We are grateful to the local and statewide community, colleagues from library systems across the state. And to everyone who shared the support links, uh, where they have opportunities to donate. On the expenses side, in six zero 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 five programming and outreach supplies. Uh, there was seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents spent for supplies for the children's programs and the branch programs. In, uh, library collections, again, the books, the movies, et cetera, we spent eleven thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. And then over on the gifts and memorial side of things, uh, things have been very active on both the collection side and programming. Uh, fifty-three hundred seventy-six dollars spent for books with several gifts. And on the programming side, twenty-eight hundred twenty-one dollars was spent on programming supplies and, uh, Kate and Misty and Faith, they have been very busy with all the summer program planning, a lot of those expenses. Um, over on sixty-nine, five hundred grant expenses. Seventy-one hundred thirty dollars and sixty-one cents was spent using grant funds from the Western Maryland Regional Library for the purchases of our annual summer reading logs, summer reading totes, which are green this year. Uh, storytime in the park promotional materials and expenses related to enable two of our staff members to attend the Maryland Library Association Conference, uh, this year. Those were the highlights I pulled out. Did anybody have any questions, staff? Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve statistical and financial reports.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carry. A statement regarding the closed meeting. Um, the board went into closed meeting, um, after the last board meeting, which was
Nineteenth.
Thank you. The nineteenth was a Monday instead of a Tuesday. Um, it was to discuss personnel issue, no, um, nothing was resolved at that point and the meeting was postponed. New business?
There is no new business.
Okay. Unfinished business, Western Port flooding update.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Um, the building is cleaned and ready for restoration. Last week, we received donations, uh, for the collection from the Lion Center Foundation, seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, we received, uh, eighteen hundred dollar gift for a couple from the Flintstone Elementary, uh, student art project. And as Lisa said, we've received other funds from, uh, many of our other online platforms. We've also, uh, requested donations for the collection from the Del Fest Foundation, from the Save the Western Library Group, and also the Moran Foundation. Uh, we have begun working on gathering our replacement costs and replace, or prioritizing the work to be done and the furnishings to be replaced in the proper order. Um, at this time, until we know the full scope of how far our money's gonna go, we're asking the public to hang on to the material that they may want to donate until we know what the actual volume of the need is. Um, we are in contact with our insurance company, uh, to get our scope of work correct for the restoration services. Uh, in the meantime, the Public Services Department have begun pre-planning for, uh, some pop-up activities at the Western Port Library location. Um, probably middle to end of July, so there will be library services back there, so. Things are moving ahead in that regard, so. Questions on that?
Hours of operation in FY twenty-six. The changes that have been made.
Via email, we had an affirmation of these hours. What we need to do now that we're in a public meeting is a motion to confirm that affirmation and approve these hours. Second, and then an approval from the board. So we did take the suggestion from the floor at the last meeting to have an evening hour, and that's, uh, evening hours, and that's Tuesday nights. Uh, but for the most part, that's the only update that's happened, uh, from the schedule. Uh, as you'll see, uh, most of the branches are closed on Monday. Western Port will be open once it's reopened from the flood on Mondays. Uh, again, we emphasize that all the library branches are staying open. Service reductions are shared across all six locations. And then, and everyone, uh, in essence loses one day of service, so.
Can I have my question? Why did we get Monday? Just out of curiosity. Is that the week's day? We have weeks people that day?
Uh, no, it's actually the first day of the week, um, and it is typically busy because we're closed the day before. Um, so any day where we're closed the day before, it's gonna be our busiest, so we just assume it's gonna hit on Tuesday now. Um, but that allowed us to provide Saturday hours at an additional location, so.
And again, there was a lot of public comment about more or different hours, I guess, after we set this, there still will be an option to be able to look at different hours as we're moving along.
Um, the out, as long as there's funding, we can adjust the hours at any point.
Okay. Just wanna make sure because there was a lot of chatter out there about hours and so, okay.
I said there's a lot of chatter out there about hours.
Okay. Good.
We're in the middle of the week, too. To behave.
Last meeting began.
I know.
We have a motion to approve.
I made, I made a vote.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, library.
Thank you.
Hours are approved.
Okay, uh.
We need to let the public know about that, cuz then the room will get forget.
Are.
We need to let the public know the new hours.
Yes, that is in the works. That's one of the reasons we started with an email affirmation, so we could begin the production of materials that need to go out.
Okay, changes to health insurance and contribution.
So. The board has requested that the library system continue to offer health insurance coverage to library staff as part of the county's health insurance plan. What that entails is um, exempt staff, their contributions would go up from, I apologize, this is supposed to be casting. Would go up from five percent to eight percent. And for those, um, hourly workers, their rate would go up from five percent to six percent. Making the total library cost for projected for fiscal twenty-six, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. See, there's one more slide here and I get to share. Get to find the right one. So what that means for our employees, there's a bundle in there, is that currently employees that are exempt, exempt staff are paying fifty dollars per month. Um, their contribution will go up to ninety-three dollars a month, an increase of forty-three dollars per month. For those non-exempt staff, their monthly contribution will go from fifty dollars to sixty-nine dollars. And pending successful contract negotiation, the contribution from the library director will go from zero to three hundred and five dollars per month.
Any questions? Comments? We have approval to the changes to health insurance and contributions.
So move.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you. All right. Because of the additional cost of staying on the county's health insurance plan. We needed to find another seventy-three thousand dollars, so what I'm requesting based on, uh, the uh, suggestion of a board member is that we add seventy-three thousand dollars to the Gibson Memorials income line in the expectation that we can raise that revenue in fiscal twenty-six. And then the budget will be balanced, so I would like a request to add seventy-three thousand dollars to the Gibson Memorials income line. Please, yes, sir. I saw you had a question, you're in question.
Oh, yeah, give me just a second. I think I'm afraid of it, oh. From past experience. Is it realistic to assume that amount of money can be developed for gifts and med? Does that do? I mean, how do you know? How do I know? But from past experience? Does that do?
From past experience, we can raise a large percentage of that through the typical Gibson Memorials that come in that we usually use to augment and supplement our collection budgets. So what will happen is all of those donations and gifts in memory of, of individuals, um, will now be counted as part of operating as opposed to an additional purchase for the library system. So in that regard, we will be able to make up the bulk of that seventy-three thousand dollars.
And how will the, uh, board be able to see the progress of monthly report?
Every month, every month in our financial reports, but we will certainly highlight that as, uh, as something on the agenda.
And is that something that, uh, you will be handling, Lisa, or the friends of, all the friends of the library, who, who's gonna be responsible if we don't get it?
Well, it's just like every other budget line.
Okay.
It's gonna come to me.
Okay.
Um, but Lisa and I will be tracking it on a regular basis.
Okay.
As you can tell from her many reports that she's given, she's very detailed and will know to the penny how we're doing and, and, and have a very timely assortment of that.
Okay.
The board will conceivably have to make a decision at, perhaps in the spring, if it appears that there's no way we'll get to that.
Okay.
They may have to make some sort of retraction or some retreat from some of their, uh, other, uh, service goals, but we're not there yet.
I was just thinking, uh, as we are looking to open, reopen up the Westport Library. Maybe somebody could have some kind of a ball, charity or fundraiser involved, um, to open them up, but also to maybe help towards this seventy-three thousand dollars. I don't know, it's, I know the friends down south are pretty active, so.
I think it's conceivable that it really doesn't matter where the revenue falls in line items, that grants are an option too.
Okay.
So even though it's showing grant income at one fifteen, four thirty-three. Potentially, you know, increasing the revenue from those.
Correct.
reduces the need for, for Gibson Memorial.
Thank you, Julie, good point.
I was just thinking, since I'm still single, I could turn to the ball at Westport when it opens up.
Dance with her.
Dance, girl.
Mother's Jack comes with me.
Oh, I'd say to see that. You pay attention back there.
He's smiling.
So, uh, the collection budget?
We have not cut the collection budget because that's not something the board was willing to entertain, so we.
I know, it says minus, I don't understand, my question was the fifty-one thousand dollar line.
Gotcha. The fifty-one thousand is a reduction in the operating funds for the collection budget. But the collection budget as a whole remains the same because we are adding two special gifts to make up that fifty-one thousand. Thirty-one thousand from the Logston account, our special accounts.
Thanks.
And twenty thousand dollars from the Ralston gift that we just received that will go towards the Laveil collections.
Okay, so that's for Frostburg and Laveil and then the rest of the money. So that, so the other money can go to the other branch.
I'm sorry, could you speak up soon? I'm sorry.
So the, um, the other money, so Frostburg gets their collections out of that money.
They get a portion of all their collections out of that thirty-one, correct? And Laveil gets a portion of their collections out of the twenty thousand dollars.
Which leaves the rest of the money to be some to them and then to the rest of the libraries.
They are, uh, they haven't been, the distribution hasn't been set yet. Um, but it sets us up for a continuation of the current distribution of funds for the collection across the branches.
Right. But those two specialties have to go to them.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any cost savings with Western Port being focused right now? Um, or will there be?
There will be a slight, uh, savings in purchasing of collections, but that will be used up at the point when we reopen, so those funds will be used. You know, I think what we're saving at this point would be utilities, um, uh, and, uh, that's about it. We still have the staff and all that, so.
Another, um, another crazy question for me. You know, two of the things that happened this past year is to work on how we save Westport and, uh, the Crick, I mean, and Longeconey, uh, but the second piece is our employees. If we raised more than the seventy-three thousand dollars to balance the budget, is there a way that anything over, uh, over the seventy-three thousand can go back to help support the employees with their additional expense with insurance? Cuz I know, you know, we talked a lot about some of our employees not making the livable wage for the county, but is there a way to, to say that if we get over the seventy-three, that could be one of the first things that we try to support? If, I don't know, if anybody else likes the idea or not, I mean.
That could certainly be put in a motion.
Okay, I'd motion that once we raise seventy-three thousand dollars, that certain portion based on the board goes back to our employees to help support their increase in health costs.
All employees, correct?
All, all, all employees. Except, yes, all employees.
Except exempt.
Except exempt. The ones that are.
Then the non.
The non-exempt, yes.
Alright, we're not catching up.
And if that money's raised, does it go back into that gift and memorial?
Well, as Julie said, if we raise the money, we can, we'll see it coming in and then we can allocate it as we see fit into whatever, but expense line we want.
The flexible money is gonna be in your operating money because if those gifts and memorials are given for a specific purpose, they're restricted for that purpose. So the money that you have above the seventy-three thousand, you're going to have to take it out of the operating line and not a gift, not reallocate it to a memorial fund for paying for staff. So I hope that makes sense, but you, you have to take it out of, um,
But if, if, cuz right now we're at seventy-three thousand dollars in the hole. So we're saying we're gonna use this gift and memorial just, just to balance the budget right now. But if we raise in grants or gifts or memorials or fundraising, whatever it may be, then that money didn't have to be used. The gift and memorial.
I'm just saying, like, if the grant, the grant has to be used for the grants restricted purposes.
Correct.
The gift and memorial has to be used for the gift and memorial for restricted purposes, so we'll have to, um, look at unrestricted funds
Right.
to be real, we allocated in the way that already is distracting, and I just wanna make that clear.
Okay, that, that makes more sense.
But I can move it around to make it work, but it can't be made to work.
After the seventh break is raised.
Yeah, so if I can, if I, let me make sure I've got this right. May I summarize Artie's motion? Um, a motion to balance the FY twenty-six operating budget by increasing the expected revenue by seventy-three thousand dollars in the Gibson Memorials line. And if we raise more than seventy-three thousand, a portion goes back to make up for health insurance increases for staff, not including the exempt staff.
Correct, that's my motion.
Some stuff. Those are the ones that, on this line, who are the exempt staff?
That would be members of the leadership team, that would be myself, the director of administrative services, director of, uh, public services, director of marketing and outreach, director of my team.
The ones that are making the work.
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah.
Oh.
Your vote.
Can we get the?
All employees, but I think it's overly hard for their speech, and I think, well, I just don't know.
I vote no.
Julie, would you vote?
Yeah, voting no, I do agree.
I'm gonna go no. I agree with the concept, but I just hate to see that we're gonna strangle, you know, put that on, on, there may be something else happen in the spring. If there is money, I think the board would be more willing to, would certainly be willing to do that. That's my opinion.
Okay.
So are we back to the motion without the addendum?
Yes.
Uh, Artie firsted it. Sue, are you willing to second it?
Could you raise your hand?
Yes. Artie made a motion to balance FY twenty-six operating budget by increasing the expected revenue by seventy-three thousand dollars in the Gibson Memorials line.
Sue seconded.
Well, she seconded the first one.
I'll second this one.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval, uh, let's talk about the FY twenty-six operating budget. No. No, that was just the balance of the budget, aren't you?
Definitely. There's a lot of.
Alright, I'm putting the budget, the budget summary up on the wall. So the activities that we've undertaken to do that is we've eliminated three of seven part-time branch staff positions. The director of human resources will be reduced from a full-time to a twenty-hour week position. The delivery position will go down from twenty hours to twelve hours per week. We are remaining on the county's health insurance plan. Employee contribution for health insurance increases to eight percent per month for exempt positions. Employee contribution for health insurance increases to six percent for non-exempt positions. Pending successful negotiations of the contract with the executive director, they will begin to contribute to health insurance premiums. We have eliminated the annual bonus allocation. We have eliminated individual memberships. We have eliminated staff service award funding. We've eliminated three of four library-funded cell phone accounts. We have added a five percent wage increase for the twelve staff that were identified by the library advisory committee and ever since have, as earning less than the livable wage figure. The George's Creek and Western Port libraries will work on alternate days and they will share the same staff. Those full-time staff that are disassociated from their current work location will be assigned to a new work location at their current rate of pay. Leadership team, materials team, and the story core staff have been assigned on on-call several on-call Saturdays throughout FY twenty-six. If public service staff cannot fulfill, uh, opening a branch, these staff are on call. The, uh, Joe Ralston gift of twenty thousand dollars will be used to substitute for a portion of Laveil's annual collection budget. Thirty-one thousand dollars will be removed from the Logston special. Thirty one thousand dollars will be removed from the Logston special account to be used for the purchase of Frostburg materials. The South Cumberland security guard funding has been eliminated. Supplemental water service for the public and staff at Westernport and Georges Creek has, will be terminated. Uh, delivery will go from five days a week to three days a week. Funding has been provided through contract for a, uh, grant writer and a grant locator. And we have increased the expected revenue from the Shaper Estate by about four thousand dollars. Plus, we've added the seventy three thousand dollars to the gifts and memorials. So with that said, we have a balanced budget. We have a schedule of operations. Um, what questions may I answer for you all? The seventy three thousand dollars that we're going to be raising does include funding. It does include twenty five thousand dollars to renew the Westernport flood insurance. So that is already in the budget and required. So it's all wrapped up in a ball.
I thought we were going to eliminate the grant writer since the county grants writer can assist with grants.
The grants writer can help write, but they can't help find them and they can't ferret them out. They're not, they don't have time to be looking for grants for us from national corporations. They're going to be looking for grants for the county, not necessarily libraries. Once we've identified them and once we've figured out how to apply, they're certainly welcome to, they are certainly able to help draft the documents. That would be required.
How much is that?
Twenty cents.
I just would like to say it's Joanne Ralston, I knew her.
Okay.
And it's Joanne.
Thank you.
Even though it's spelled like Jo.
Thank you.
Well, done too.
I guess the reason it wasn't done, Renee, is because that was a comment that you made to me, but I didn't know the rest of the board was in on that or not. So I took no action on that suggestion until I heard from the majority of the board.
So the funding is going to be for a contract for a grant finder or grant writer?
All of the above.
And the county grant writer is going to assist in writing. And we have so many other folks in Allegheny County that know how to write grants. Are we going to also employ some of the volunteers? Maybe that could be, you said the volunteer committee, right?
No.
Oh, that was Sue. Who said the volunteer?
It was already done.
Oh. So maybe that could be a, a task also of the grant, of the volunteer committee that you said. Could that be?
It could be.
Okay.
It could be. We are receiving, we're receiving ideas for grants from all of our friends groups.
Okay.
All of our other folks, so it's a matter of.
And, and I think that can be part of the board's, um, involvement is finding what grants to write so that we don't have to employ a grants writer because of Tanya Gomer at, at county level is very good at writing grants. So she just needs the background information that you can provide.
Right, but we also need to, I think we need assistance in identifying grant opportunities that have not been tackled before. And that is, I believe, the value of the grants writer, someone that is working within that sphere of influence so that they can, um, know about various foundations and other things that are outside of our typical application area.
Does information like that get shared out through the associate, the library association with the state that you're involved with? Or do you have colleagues from across the state that can provide that kind of information?
Uh, we do get some of that information, um, but, uh, it's not necessarily set up in regards to providing operating funding. It's additional add-on kind of things like.
Very few grants are going to provide operating.
I, I agree, I agree one hundred percent with that.
So. I, I just don't, I don't think we need, this year can do twenty thousand dollars to someone. We have some more now. I think there are volunteers in the room that have indicated they have resources or members that have resources that can seek them out. Especially if we have someone basically available to help.
So Julie, are you suggesting twenty thousand go elsewhere?
Yeah.
From the seventy thousand?
Contact with county to a part specific and their response was.
All John, yes, all John has to do is ask Jason to have Tanya write the grant and Tanya writes the grant.
And after him said that, Tanya would, or Tanya would write the grant. But we needed to identify.
Identify the grant, yes.
So we would provide.
Any, any fact.
They would do it, put it into a grant line, which.
Yes.
Because that's what they do with the grant.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, reduce the seventy three thousand dollars by adding the twenty thousand from the grant writer to, to, okay, I, I moved to eliminate the grant writer.
Don't worry.
You'll keep me, see, he decided he'd keep me straight.
We have a second. Gary seconded. In favor?
Aye, sorry.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yes.
So do we get a motion to approve the budget now?
I should move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. Gary, do you? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? How old are you? Any leadership team up next? I think that's where we're at.
I just wanted to briefly, uh, remind everyone to please participate in our summer reading program. Um, please check out our reading logs and our lovely green tote bags that we have. Check out our schedule of events. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment, Jack Coburn.
Good evening, board. John, I first of all, I'd like to thank Sue for her time she spent with the board and Artie. We do appreciate your vote to make sure the libraries remain open and tweaking the hours. It's like every organization, you adjust as you go, we do appreciate all the time you spend. Uh, we did get our hour in the evening on Tuesday, which is much appreciated. It's now we can have those meetings that we need and also keep our numbers up. I do know two vacancies here, John's working on replacements, the board correct, Mr. Doug?
Uh, I have submitted the board nomination, yes, to the county.
And we are still making sure that you do have representation in each area where there is a library, like Westernport, Long Island, Frostburg, so we don't run into that problem again.
We interviewed the candidates that the board requested that we interview. And the board selected two candidates to submit to the county commission.
The committee did, not committee.
Okay, so the committee did, are they, do you know their location, just their city?
Frostburg and Compton.
Frostburg and Compton.
Because of course the commissioners do have to approve.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Well, thank you all for your time, appreciate it. Thank you Sue, Artie, wishing you luck with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
I'm just mad I can't run for mayor next time.
Jim Ritchie?
John, I, I do want to thank you, Jack mentioned, that you did work on a very difficult problem and I certainly hope it doesn't last for other years. But I think there will be more money covering, even though the county didn't raise the rate, we're all still on payment tax. And we do appreciate that all the libraries were brought down a little bit. And I, I think that, um, with so many people in the administrative area, it'd be nice if, if someone, I think it should, uh, a job should be combined with another job. Take opportunity there. I'm not saying to fire anyone, but if that would come up next year, I think that would be an opportunity. Thanks, Ian.
Thank you. Charles Shaw, Shawnee?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Not to sue my own. Other school principals of staff, of students, about eight hundred. I'm sometimes the man in the middle, I don't know where you're sitting. I have reported to my PTO, my parents, I've responded to my board, I've reported to my supervisor. So it's kind of like pulled in all directions. One of the things I found that was very important was communication. And I know that's an area all of us can work on. It seems from sitting here for the last year, before the advisory committee, now attending board meetings, that communication is a problem sometimes. Seems to be a lack of communication between leadership and our staff, between leadership and the board, between the board and the community. We have a chance for public comment and I understand how that works having been to my own boards. I would suggest that there's some question and answer period where there's some give and take, where the questions can be answered there on the spot rather than waiting a month or two later. One of the questions I have is, we've talked about, heard about donations for the Westernport library. Are they earmarked for the Westernport library?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the other things I'm looking at is going into the remodel. Obviously, something that, I mean, we, we've got an empty space right now. I would suggest that there be a committee of board and public to kind of advisory committee, whatever you want to call it, for the remodel. So it's not one person's decision, but that there's a group decision as to what's going on. Already, there's discussion out there of cuts being made to circulation, uh, cuts being made to computer usage. We just saw this, this afternoon that the computer usage is up eight percent. So that's not something we can look at cutting computer usage. So my suggestion is that we go ahead and form a committee of, you've got people here from Westernport, say the library, Westernport friends, area, and the board to kind of look at what's going into the library, where the money to be spent, what things are needed from donations, there are people lining up, oh, I've got this and I donated. Now, the last thing would be hours. I appreciate keeping all libraries open. Jack, that we're looking at using that space as much as possible. Would it be possible for the Westernport library to go from ten to five to twelve percent? That'd weigh more meetings that they place in the evening rather than being chased out. The hours would, number of hours would change just that time limit. Thank you.
Carol Kenny?
What, am I calling up the research? Uh, I'm chair of Westernport friend group, Carol Kenny. Um, I just want to talk about our service leader at Westernport, Kathy Murphy. She has done a wonderful job for us. She knows our library. She has been our service leader for the last seven and a half years. In the last three months, she's had to juggle her duties at the library along with a critically ill husband who has been in and out of and in nursing home. And he now is in ICU at, um, UPMC. You know, and, and over the years, as the friends group chairperson, Kathy and I have gotten pretty close because we work pretty close together. And it's, she, I just feel that there's a lot of pressure, you know, with Kathy having work and, um, home, you know, visiting the hospital all the time. Kathy is dedicated to the library. She has purchased many things for the library with her own money. Um, when she found out that my mom's birthday in March of last year, she purchased a sheet cake to be enjoyed by all of the St. Patrick's Day music participants, um, that Dawn Stevens did. My mom was very surprised too. Kathy looks for ways to make money and spend money for the friends group. She has forged community liaisons, the town of Westernport, the rescue, the fire company, senior citizens, Bran and Edel nursing homes, elementary school, the churches. I know with the nursing homes, when we have different projects going on, and that is what Charles said about the hours. Um, we've had authors come in and in the evening and do book reviews and talk about their books. And with only one, one evening a week, that is going to unpack that. Uh, Kathy knows everybody that walks in the library. She talks to the patrons. She knows what every patron reads and she will suggest books to them where they are. And what I'm saying is, it all boils down to, you need to keep this employee because she won't find anyone more dedicated to serving the public, the library public. And she does have another job where she is a pharmacy technician too. Um, one last thing I wanted to ask, there are things at the library, like the, um, quilts that were on the walls. Um, because I had some of the ladies that made those quilts ask me, were they going to go back or where were they? Or if they were going to be disposed of, they want them back. Um, there's also the pictures that were on the walls. I know in the meeting room, there was the huge picture of the town. So there's been some questions about those things.
They've all been saved and they're, uh, they're still in consideration as we look at the layout and the plans and everything.
Alright.
They are being saved, nothing is being discarded.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank Sue and Artie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, uh, Artie, uh, gave us three books. At this church.
The food was good too.
Which I passed one off to my granddaughter. Unfortunately, most of them were destroyed in the flood because a man left over, went to the library.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I gotta say, because I heard, I heard somebody was getting married, I said.
I'm, I'm wondering if, I don't know if the plans are coming along for the Westernport library, but it, the meeting room where it was, it pretty much could have been sealed off from the library. Wondering if there's a way when we do that, still have a meeting that people could use without the library being open.
That is something that we are seriously considering and integrating into our potential layout.
Yeah.
So you said something that we're seriously considering?
It's, it's in all my.
Okay. So that would mean maybe a volunteer will be able to be present, open up, and then the staff, okay?
We haven't gotten there yet, but I would anticipate the possibility of using that space when the library portion is not open. That's what I'm trying to get towards. But we're not that far enough down the road to say how, actually, we're yet.
Okay.
Vicki Brenneman?
You mentioned that you will have staff traveling between Westernport and Georges Creek now. Um, what's that going to look like? Right now, we have Westernport staff, we have Georges Creek staff. And your staffing changes, you just today said people or somebody said. And your staffing changes, you just today said people, or somebody said, would travel between Westernport and Georges Creek on alternating days.
The same staff would work at Westernport on Mondays. They would then work at Georges Creek on Tuesdays. On Wednesdays, they would work at Westernport. On Thursdays, they would work at Georges Creek. On Fridays, one of them would work at Westernport, and they would be supported by a staff member from another branch. And on Saturday, the one that didn't work Friday would work the Saturday at the Georges Creek branch, also supported by other staff from other branches to make sure that that building stays open.
Okay, so that sounds like we are keeping the people that our patrons are used to seeing in each branch.
In that scenario, we have two staff members associated with those positions, with that, those job descriptions for those facilities, yes.
Okay, but my question was, are these the people that our patrons are going to be looking for when they go back in the doors?
There are currently three full-time staff, if you total the number of staff between Georges Creek and Westernport. We are going to have two staff members at the new reconfigured Georges Creek/Westernport shared branch. So one of them will be redeployed to another location.
Okay. Are they aware of this plan?
Yes.
And how will the determination be made?
To be as fair as possible, we have opened those positions up because they are, in essence, new positions. Because you're now going to be managing two branches instead of one branch, we're working at two branches. So as a new position, we have opened a brand-new search to internal candidates so that they may apply should they wish to. And then we will pick the most qualified and motivated, what we think is going to be the best person for those positions, as would anyone else who we have a base.
And I'm assuming, who is the board or two, who is your HR person who makes these decisions in the hiring?
It is a interview committee made up of library staff from various positions and grades and levels that represents the entire library system.
Okay. Keep in mind, please, it is very important to patrons of the library, especially in a small town. When you walk in in the library and knows your name and has a book sitting there saying, hey, I saved this, I know you're going to love this. You, you don't get that in, in a large city. People are looking for this. People are looking for somebody who does know them and can help them. And we are asking that you give great consideration to keeping local people, and, and this applies to all the branches. I think every branch would tell you the same thing.
I think if you went to the staff at this circulation desk, they would know almost everybody's name.
I'm certain they do.
So I don't think, I don't think that it is unique to your locations. I think we are lucky to have a very dedicated staff. And they all invest great amount of their own personal time to make those connections. So I believe whoever we select there will also be very motivated to make those connections in the community. So it's not a one and done, and it's not lost if all three of those people don't happen to be applied to return to those locations.
Okay, exactly. And if you were listening right before you said that, I said the same thing. I believe that happens at every one of our branches. There is no doubt in my mind. You have people in every branch that knows their community, and probably people who grew up in that community, maybe not in every case, but often. And that goes a long way. And we are advocating for all of our libraries, as always, as that every time I've spoken, I have said, I advocate for all of our libraries and all of our librarians. And I just don't want to see somebody move someplace where, you know, it's a detriment to them. To, to them personally, it's a long way to drive out of Westernport to another location.
Well, as, as you may recall in the budget, all of the present full-time staff will retain their jobs.
Thank you. That, that's, that's, yeah, that is a good thing.
One of the compromises we had to make for the level of funding that we have received is that they all may not necessarily stay at the same location. So we've had, we've had to give, we've had to give and take. So it's not a, it's not a, it's not a win-win-win-win-win-win. It's a give and take that we've had to balance.
Okay, you also stated that if the funds do not come in, the seventy-three thousand that got reduced to forty-three thousand, that in the spring, services may be adjusted accordingly. What services in particular might that be that could be adjusted?
I don't know yet.
And Ms. Brenneman, that was fifty-three.
Fifty-three, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Artie. And, and thank you for covering that, Julie and Artie. Would services include hours of operation?
No.
Okay. Okay, that was my concern on that.
It would not be suggested by me, let's put it that.
And did I understand correctly that the two candidates for the Board of Trustees are from Cumberland and Prosper that have been submitted?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, thank you. To the trustees, you guys have been great. It's, it's been a long hard haul from December fourth, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trish Morgan?
I'm Trish from Vacation Bible School. Now I know my name. Mine tonight is called Accomplishments Versus Disappointment Again. I thank the trustees for the opportunity to speak up once again about Westernport Library, which has stood for fifty-five years on Main Street. I thank Sue and Artie for your service, and we will miss you, and I mean that, too. I'm Trish Morgan, president of Save the Westernport Library, which, as you know, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to save and sustain the Westernport Library. Our community has pulled together and showed its support by all of us together raising nearly seventy thousand dollars in four months. Yes, that's four months raising seventy thousand dollars, and we're very, very proud of that. I think it shows our investment in our library, in our community. It's been a grassroots effort, and that is the accomplishment I speak of, we, the people. Then this Board of Trustees made and passed a motion to keep all the libraries open in Allegheny County, and we count that as our second accomplishment. We all spread the word, and our throng of supporters were proud of our work and excited to know our Westernport Library and the other libraries would remain accessible. Such an accomplishment, and I give kudos to my team on Save the Westernport Library for orchestrating and pulling the community together. Then the flood. Our library was devastated by flash floodwaters, and what a sad day that was. But once again, we, the people, came out in droves to become neighbors, helping neighbors, towns helping towns, states, federal helping with cleanup. A master undertaking, and so many people to thank. Then comes the disappointment. Disappointment in the leadership of the ACLS. Disappointment that leadership feels that only a few days of access to our library is accessible or acceptable, I apologize. Disappointment that leadership feels it's best to decrease library space and make meeting space, thus eliminating approximately half of our book inventory. Disappointment that leadership gets to do what it wants, how it wants, and when it wants, regardless of implications for our children. Disappointment that leadership has been in place for over twenty-five years, but morale in the ALS organization is at an all-time low. We've spoken to many people. Employees fear for their jobs. Employees who get written up and chastised for not meeting leadership's expectations. Disappointment that the trustees have up till now been a little complacent and agreeable with leadership as one half of our libraries were in danger of being closed. Where the libraries would have been down six to three like that, I believe, if all of these people had not pulled together and had our, had our say. Disappointment hangs in the air as the floor plan came out this week, and now Westernport is angered once again. Nothing for the people as this administration does its work. They take half away, and then maybe people won't want to come, and then we can close it next year. Trustees, please be vigilant. Please consider some changes that could better your organization. You have the power to do that. The ones at the top make tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars while the ones at the bottom of the minimum wage salary scale serve the public and relate to thousands and thousands of children every day, every year. Yes, they are poorly paid, and why is that? Where is the equality in that? Disappointment that the director still sits high on the mountain while everything below is stagnant and unhappy. Remember, this is just my perspective. We'd rather feel accomplishment, but all we feel is disappointment in the ACLS.
Thank you. Carrie D. Michelle? Did I say correctly?
I'm sorry. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you all again. I appreciate it. And I do want to wish Sue and Artie all, all the best, and we do appreciate everything you've done for us. It's been very good to work with you all. I wanted to say also, thank you very much. From the bottom of my heart, this issue is very, very dear to me for keeping our branches open and for hearing me and others ask me asked if you would reconsider the hours for the Westernport branch. I saw that we are open until eight on Wednesday evenings. And I do personally very much appreciate that. It allows for more access to our library. I'm wondering if, as Charles suggested, if possibly, I'm asking for more hours. Reason number one, I understand that we have parameters to work within. But I was wondering if possibly we could just adjust one evening so that we open a little later, maybe noon to set. I, I apologize, I've been on vacation, and I just realized today I had sent letters out talking about this, and a couple of them, yeah, I believe yours was mine, and possibly yours, I guess, and they got returned an email for some reason, I didn't realize until today, suggesting, again, just more availability in the evening. I took it to heart, Mrs. Hendrickson said about, she takes the children to the library. I've been a part of that with her for years. I helped with book fairs and celebrated reader, and I've seen her taking the children to the school. And she said she gets them there, which she does. And then there was a problem getting them back. And I really believe that reading, the love of reading and the success in her life comes from early reading and exposure to libraries. So I personally have taken, taken into heart and want to get those children in there. But with the hours closing and parents not being able to get home in time to get there, it is going to be hard to keep the kids there and expose them. And on a personal note, I was very honored to be a part of Libraries for Magic, the event that we put on at FSU last Friday for the kids' last school day for the Westernport Elementary students that were affected by the flood. And I was able to be a storyteller. And I have to tell you, it was amazing. I read to my kids, and they're avid readers now, but it had been a while. And all I had to say, because I've been a substitute teacher in the county for years until just a few years ago due to my MS. I love children and I invest in them. But I didn't know any of these. These youngsters were, were younger than, than my time with them. So all they knew was, I'm Miss Carrie, your storyteller today. And I read stories, and, and Mrs. Sadeen, Nancy Sadeen, a former librarian for Westernport, provided me with a little interactive activity I opened up with. And at the end of it, those children were wrapped around my legs, they have, please come back. They loved it, they just wanted the stories, they wanted the interaction. And I believe that we owe it to every child in all of our libraries to make that happen. However, we have to work together, understand the parameters of budgets and all, but to have the hours available and make it so that parents can get them there, we'll do our part. It's very important for them and their futures and our futures, because they're going to be our leaders. So we need to make all of the availability available to them. I'm sorry, I, I don't have prepared remarks tonight, it's just from the heart. But it was an incredible experience, and I want to share with you, one of the books that I bought, I slowly opened the cover, and it had been destroyed a bit. Probably a youngster that didn't know any better, but there were multiple crayon marks delivered to the book. And every kid, every, let me rephrase that, every group of children that I had in my rotation, they all said, oh, Miss Carrie, somebody wrote that book. Oh, so they knew it was wrong. And we stopped for a moment, and we, we said, this isn't the way we treat library books. We have to respect them. We don't draw on them, we take care of them, we respect the bindings because we want to share these with everybody else. This is our connection to each other, as Trish likes to say, we, the people. And I was so proud, so proud that every single group recognized that, and we had a moment to talk about it. And then I eagerly jumped on the bandwagon and said, and you know, you can get more of these books. Just go to your library. Mrs. Hendrickson's there for you at Westernport Elementary. All the other schools have wonderful librarians. We have Mrs. Kathy Murphy that, that's there. We just need to get you there, and you can enjoy all of this, and we can have programs. And I just hope that we can continue to work with that. And our hours need to be available to make those, those kinds of things happen. Because I'll tell you what, I can't stop thinking about this, all kids wrapping around my legs, please come back. Please read the stories. It was just everything. And I just wanted to ask a question. I, I did hear something, and I just wasn't sure if I had missed something. Do we actually have anything going on as far as the volunteer program? Are, are we working on that?
Volunteer program exists. The application to volunteer is online as well as available in all the locations, so feel free. You can fill them out, and so we can start evaluating and put you to use.
Okay, all right, so I, I will look at that. So the, the existing one is what you're going with? Okay, I just, I needed some verification on that. And then I had one last question. I did see a diagram that was circulating on social media. And it is of the proposed usage of the Westernport Library after it reopens. Is that an official thing, or? You have not seen it? I have seen it, okay. I just happened to find it that night. But in the, in the diagram that I saw, I believe it was called a community classroom.
Yeah, I believe what you're referring to was shared with Kathy Murphy so that she could make comments on how it got out on social media is beyond me, so.
This was not anything that I saw through Kathy Murphy.
Anyway, anyway, yes, I'm sorry.
I, I was just wondering, what is a community classroom?
Well, that is that designated space that Sue talked about that would be available when potentially the library is not open. We're seeking grant funding so that we can equip it with chairs and tables, much like you have here in this room, so that it could be used for GED classes, so that it could be used for cooking classes, so that it could be used by a variety of partners, library system, and community groups, without necessarily having the library have to be open so that those groups can meet. So that is the purpose and the intent of that label, the community classroom.
I must have misunderstood. I thought when you were talking about that earlier, it was the current meeting room space that we were thinking. No, I just understood.
The current meeting room space has been relabeled, and I believe the drawing you're referring to, as the community classroom. And the reason is because it has its own exterior entrance. Oh, you don't have the updated version?
It is a leaked internal document that has since been updated, so that's not even the most current version.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. I did not know if this was, you know, there's.
So we're still working on it, and I think it's a great idea that Charles had about a layout committee. I think, you know, now that the misinformation is out there, we need to work to clarify it so that we don't create any more animosity between ourselves, if we have to, than we have to.
Well, I, I want to be clear, I have not spoken with Kathy about anything, and I did not read her name associated to this. I did not know if this was accurate, and that's, that's the purpose of my question.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what it was, because when I first looked at the diagram, I was stunned at the lack of available space for our books. And I mean, we need the computers, we need all of that, all of that makes up a library. But I was just kind of shocked at the, the non-space allocated for our books. So I wanted to ask them that.
We will, thank you, yeah. I'm not sure that, what version you were looking at, but we're definitely.
Is, is there anything that we will be able to see in the near future, or do you have any?
Yep, I hope so. We're working with several furnishings companies, as well as several built-in cabinetry companies. So we're going to try and get a design and a layout place with some general scope, as we outlined here today.
And just to be clear, on my honor, I have not talked with Kathy. I think she is a fabulous librarian, and she's never been anything but appropriate and, and phenomenal at her job. So please, that information did not come from her. I saw a post on Facebook, and I just was curious about it because I expect this, I've been away on vacation. I do, again, thank you, and wish you all a good night.
Thank you.
May I ask just one more question? May I? My question is, John, earlier you-
My question is, John, earlier you had said that our hours might be able to be tweaked if you had funding. How much funding do you need to have an extra day or two? If we wanted our library to be open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the library exists with a new schedule three days. If we wanted to have two more days, what is the funding required for that? Save the Westernport Library has financial means for that. So.
Great. So I guess, I guess what I would request is that you would put that request in an email to me, then we can make the calculations and reply.
Okay.
I don't know those figures off.
Right, right. But it would be the process generally.
He has payroll times fifty-two weeks, but he could, but I totally do cover already.
It's going to take a little more than just figuring out like what payroll be since that staffing is supposed to be shared between the two libraries. I think it'll take a little bit more calculation than that.
All right, thank you. I'll send that email.
Great.
Mary Ann Morris?
Jim Ritchie mentioned maybe through attrition eventually the upper administrative or leadership end could be withed down some. And that's a good intro for me because all through this process, it has hit me that we're somewhat of an upside-down triangle. We're kind of big at the top and small at the bottom. The bottom being where we serve the people instead of being small at the top. And I've often thought, now, we're not Montgomery County. We're not Fairfax County, Virginia. So I decided to look into Montgomery County and just see what some of their stats are. So at first I looked at director's salary, and it is listed at between two hundred to two hundred twenty thousand dollars, which is about, our director's salary is about fifty percent less than that. And then I looked at their leadership, and beyond their director, they have an executive team of five people, and they have five regional managers, which makes a leadership team of ten. So our leadership team would be about fifty percent of that, from what I can gather. And our director's salary is, I mean, just in general, no matter who the director is, is about fifty percent of that. However, we have six libraries, they have twenty-two. So we are twenty-seven percent of their library size, which is closer to a fourth than half. So to me, that kind of verifies that we just tradition the years, the higher at the top than the bottom. And as Jim Ritchie started to mention, and I would like to say, I think we need to, over the years, maybe, or coming forward not too long from now, start to look at that seriously. And that, I guess, would be the trustees and whoever accounts for the money and. No, 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 I don't mean that. I mean.
I'm not making any money, so.
Talking about the trustees making decisions about what size the leadership, the administrative end of things are compared to the people that actually work in this. Because it does, according to this, but, you know, it does seem very imbalanced to me. Something else. The last time we were here, it was mentioned that it's a good thing that Georgia's, the Georgia Street area has library services six days a week. And that's something. But there are eight miles between Westernport Library and Georgia Street.
You don't want to get me started on this one.
That is further. When I looked it up, it surprised me. That is further than from right here to South Montgomery. That's about six and a half.
So it's a whole lot left for the people coming from Old Town and Little Orme. And those that have absolutely nothing.
Okay, okay, that's true. But, but just as it's stated, there are just people who walk, people who are elderly, who don't drive as far. I'll just, you know, to be stated that it's like one place. It was just like, yeah. All right, thank you, and thank you for all your work.
Wait a minute, I want, I want to say something to you.
Okay.
I have to disagree with you on something. You're making it sound like the staff doesn't have anything to do with the function of the library.
No, I don't believe that at all. I just think the people on the ground have, I think there should be.
But they couldn't be on the ground without some of those people on the top.
Without some of those people on top. The last time I spoke, I was supposed to talk about storytime. And if you remember that I think one person.
She'd had so many other jobs besides storytime. That's like an eighth of her job.
So maybe the librarians could do story. You know, I just think there has to be something historically that has brought us to this point, that we have this problem year after year.
Yeah, less people and less funding. You know, the funding we give to the state of Maryland is totally based on people. And we lose. Up here we lose.
But I hope my point is well-taken about us being half the people at the top as Montgomery County, half the salary, but about a fourth, exactly twenty-seven percent of the libraries.
Do you know how many, how much the five people of Montgomery County? Leadership team.
Well, then we've got to look at their cost of living and what they take in.
Reverend Justin Searle?
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. So first, to our library board members that are departing, we're, we're very sad to see you go, but we're very thankful for your service and dedication to this community and the organization. So we, we just want to say thank you for all that you've done, and we appreciate all that you do. And so, as I've been hearing the comments tonight and what's been getting discussed, there's one thing that I really wanted to particularly zero in with the budget, and that's what constitutes the administrative budget. I've heard numerous, over numerous occurrences that the administrative budget is seventy percent plus of the library's entire budget. I may have misheard, but that's the number that I generally hear get thrown around.
That's the percentage of the library's budget that is spent to pay people and to give them health insurance is seventy percent. It is not going towards a minority of the full staff. That is all thirty-seven members of the library staff.
So I guess my response to that question is this. When we see these charts, we don't see an itemized list of how each dollar particularly is spent. We see broad swathes of percentages. So yes, I know that that constitutes paying library employees. But what I was going to push for is maybe for the board to consider having a more itemized list with the administrative budget to see how exactly all the dollars are spent, just so that we, the people, can see that, see exactly what you're seeing, where it's not maybe settled behind closed doors, if you will, just for more transparency and accountability. So that way, we can work together to address pressing needs where cuts could be made. There, there would be absolutely no way that any library, like, any frontline library staff member should ever be cut because at that point, that would be absolutely inhumane. But what I wondered, though, is those higher managers at the top, what in the world are they exactly making? I was reading an interesting book that I got here from the, from this library, from Ralph Nader, actually. Let's Start the Revolution: Tools for Displacing the Corporate State and Building a Country That Works for the People. And just in terms of a transferable aspect, with this perspective that I found very interesting, in a scathing rebuke of the Democrat Party, they've lost sight of like how they went from being champions of the people to just being obsessed with raising corporate funds. When we consider budgets, I just would like to call us to return to our roots and remember that there is real people involved in these budgets. They deserve the absolute best benefits possible. And I would like to call for accountability that every dollar of that administrative budget is used to the greatest possible utility to get those employees, the ones that serve us, the best benefits and the best wage possible where they're no longer living paycheck to paycheck. So I would just like to see increased accountability with that kind of thing. If something's like seventy percent of a budget or vice versa, I'd like to see more like with how that's specifically broken down. But thank you for hearing me.
Do we have any comment online?
How many are in line to my dashboard?
There are ten, including this blackboard.
Any announcements and upcoming programs?
Nope.
Oh, no, I get to.
Oh, 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 I need to be adjourned.
Oh, no.
Okay, make some comments, and then I'll move to adjourn.
First, I.
There is cake waiting.
Okay, go ahead. I do want to say thank you to the county. As I prepare to step away from my role as the trustee effective June thirtieth, so I'm still here due to my relocation, I want to take a moment to reflect on what an honor it has been to serve the people of Allegheny County through this board. This experience has been both meaningful and rewarding. I've remained committed to all of our library branches, but I have a special place in my heart for Westernport and Coney. Those communities with a great mayor, mayors, who resilience and spirit deserve every ounce of support that we as the trustee can give them. Libraries in these towns are more than just buildings because they are beacons of learning, inclusion, and community pride. As I leave the board, our executive director and his exceptional team, thank you for your dedication to literacy, innovation, equitable access, and your efforts are the heartbeat of the system. And I leave inspired by the work you do every day. To my fellow trustees, thank you for welcoming me into this service. I know once I leave that Gary and, and Bill will have to fight for the best-looking trustee. But I thank them, and I. And I thank Renee for her leadership as president, which has been steady and forward-thinking, in addition to elbowing me all the time. To the teacher, Ms. Hendrickson, who redlined a lot of my work, but for your years of financial stewardship, which has strengthened the foundation we stand on. To Dr. Fiedman, not only here, but also at Prosper and his library since. Your perspective and diligence as secretary have anchored many of our decisions. And to Sue and Julie. I'm, I'm going to miss both of you. So dearly. And to Judge Leager. All of you, your passion and commitment to the mission of the public libraries have been both evident and energizing. Through my time on the board, it was shorter than expected. It was filled with purpose and pride. As the two seats now wait for new trustees and hope the county commissioners look to fill them with folks who will bring dedication, determination, creativity, and maybe a new generation deserve to challenge and to build upon this strong foundation. Thank you, board. Thank you, people of Allegheny County, for the opportunities to serve. It has truly been an honor of mine. Thank you.
And we have cake.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Artie.
Thank you.